I'd like to call the Eastline Board of Finance special meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, March 19th, and it is 5:31 PM. I'd like to start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Do you want to get this one?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is delegations where members of the public could speak to any of the items that are on our agenda tonight. There'll also be a chance for someone who's actually presenting to talk to their agenda item. So is there anyone who just wants to speak to anything in general on the agenda? No? Okay, so we'll move on to new business. This is where we're doing budget reviews of a number of different departments. And I know that we have the Public Library on the agenda tonight, but I know that you've got a conflict later on.
At 7:00.
At 7:00?
Yeah.
Well, you don't, you think that now.
You're right.
So I was wondering if anyone would like to make a motion to move the Item 5 up to Item 1 to give a...
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Now then, let's start off with the Eastline Public Library budget. This is 420 in your book. And do you have a sound?
I have our handwork.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Before we begin, I wanted to introduce Christopher Larson. Christopher is our new Assistant Director. He's been on the job for about a month, and he's been great to work with, and he's here to understand better how the budgets in town work. We're not looking for a huge increase. It's a pretty straightforward budget this year. We're looking for a 2% increase. We have slight increases in our line fees and just some inflation costs for some of our materials and whatnot, but not anything that's not terribly manageable. Let's see. The big news this year is we opened a new conference room, a multimedia conference room, which has been going nonstop. I can't even get into it, geez. We have a big projector screen and whatnot and all kinds of technological gadgets. It's a small meeting room. It's been very popular. Our summer reading doubled over the past year in terms of the amount of kids who were participating and the amount of books that they read. They read an astounding 11,000 books this summer. It was just really crazy. And our baby storytimes, which usually have five or six babies who are just learning to listen, have been attended by 25 to 30 babies at a time in the past few months. I don't know what's going on, but I've already told the school system that you better be aware that in a few years, something's going on with these babies because they're all showing up and doing all kinds of things. We continue to work with the Historical Society. We have emptied out one of our back closets, our closed dax, which is a good-sized space, and we're starting to move all of the town archives and artifacts in there. It's a state-of-the-art storage system for them. Right now, a lot of Eastlime's history is stored in people's basements and attics and whatnot, and so we've made a big effort over the past year to try to move some of that into a formal archive and catalog it and work with the Historical Society on that. And we're undergoing a strategic planning process right now. Our previous plan expired in 2023, so we're due, and we're asking everyone to fill out a survey. We've gotten quite a few back, and that continues for another month, and then we'll have a plan by the start of the new fiscal year.
Where do they find the survey?
The survey is on our website. There is a QR code with a bookmark that we have at the library. We have paper surveys at the library. We have a poster at the high school for the high school kids, and Christopher ventured out and spoke with some of the middle school students that were hanging out in the lobby. We got some feedback from them this afternoon, so it's pretty widely spread around, and we're just seeing, you know, what we need to plan for, for our services to best serve the town in the next five years. All right. So other than that, I don't have much else. I'm open to your questions.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just appreciate the job you're doing.
Thank you. It's not just me. We've got a whole team.
Well, definitely great to hear about everyone reading because it's a...
Yeah, we're back better, bigger and better than we were before COVID. For a long time, we had a long drop-off, but all of a sudden, there's kids everywhere.
I echo his sentiments that it's really appreciated what the library does for the community. Just a question on the first page, Page 2. That first column for actual expenses, there's a typo there, I would imagine. It's not $11 million?
Oh, it's there, too. Yes, it is. That's been driving us crazy with our treasurer's reports. We don't have $11 million in the bank. I would know that. I checked. We don't. What's happening is our QuickBooks system is pulling the value of the building, which the town owns, into our operating fund, and no matter what we do to move it out, it keeps creeping in. So here's one more spot where it has. I've just taken our operating budget and subtracted the $11 million and working from there on. But no, we do not have, I wish, but we don't.
Has there been any change? I know in past years, the cost of eBooks and availability, that has been a...
Yes, it's been a huge issue. The eBooks, the publishers are charging public libraries quite a bit more than they charge the average consumer. We pay $80 to $90 for an eBook, and we don't actually own it. We get to lease it 26 times or two years, and then we have to pay for it all over again. Our eBooks are supplied through the Lion Consortium that we belong to, which is a group of 30 libraries in the state. We pull together for resources, for tech help and things like that, and our eBooks come through there. Because we're with 30 libraries, we're all grouped together. There's a lot of books, but there's a lot of people. Sometimes for bestsellers, it's a two-year wait for eBooks. We do have a separate account. I have a separate line for Eastlime eBooks, and quarterly, I can buy $2,000 worth of bestsellers where the biggest lists in Eastlime are, so that we can head that off a little bit. So our patrons are getting some of those books a bit quicker, and then those revert to the General Lion Collection. The state legislature is looking at procurement law and trying to craft something that will make it illegal for publishers to sell books at a different price to public libraries than they do to the consumer, just because that's not good use of taxpayer funds. It's exploitation of taxpayer funds. And the latest twist in that is they're now thinking of dividing the eBooks into two and charging you for the first half and then for the second half of the book. It's just, you know, I'm looking at this meeting like, what? Why would you even do that? So it's a continuing issue. We're doing the best we can. I may move a little bit more money into the eBook fund, but the state legislature is, it's one of the, Connecticut's one of the first states in the country to try to make it illegal to do that to public libraries. So it's a moving target for us at this point.
And there's no way for someone to donate an eBook like they could donate a physical book?
Right, yeah. Exactly. Doesn't work like that, so unfortunately. And our eBook circulation was about 2% to 5% pre-COVID. It's now pretty solid at 10%. So it is increasingly taking up more of our circulation numbers.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge that your fundraising efforts, and they're greatly appreciated in helping us, you know, give you a budget that works for you.
Well, thank you. We do have a healthy fund drive in the Eastlime Foundation, both of which do quite a bit to help us. We try not to turn to you for any of our capital costs, carpeting and painting aside. All of our computers and furniture and whatnot, we pretty much fund ourselves. So, but we have a great town. We have a great town government who funds us adequately, and we have people who are really on board in helping us out when we need it. So thank you.
Does anyone have any other questions or comments?
And I just wanted to thank Rich for leading our men's book discussion group. He's doing a good job doing that. It's getting a following and a building. It's becoming, it takes a year or two for book groups to take off like that, but thank you for doing that. We appreciate it. All set?
All set.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so then, going back to our regular schedule, we have Department 104, Building. So, Kevin, do you...
So, do you want to just walk through it?
Yeah, I think we should. I had, I definitely had a question on 311.
So, one second, let me just pull it up. So, what was your question?
So, on 311, going from 93301 to 114, a 23% increase, and...
So...
It sounded like it was just a union contract, but then seemed like a pretty big increase for just a union contract.
So it wasn't all union contract-driven. In the prior year, there were, there's always been two admins in the land use office, but prior to the current one, I believe the office had budgeted 25 hours a week in the second position, even though that person technically had benefits. That person also worked one day a week at the field service building, so I think that person was averaging like 32 hours. That person, that new position, that position is now 37 and a half hours dedicated fully to the land use office. So now the land use has full, two full-time, 37 and a half hour a week employees. So that, that's about 12 and a half hours added to this budget on top of the 5 and 1/4% contractual obligation.
On that issue, are those hourly rates for those positions reasonable? They seemed very high to me, but...
So those are all contractually negotiated with the unions, and it also depends on years of service for those rates. And all the, for anyone listening, all of our union contracts are on the website. They're on the, under human resources, under collective bargaining.
What's the length of the contracts?
The length of the contracts? Typically, three years. So right now, the only, the only contract up for negotiation right now is the firefighter contracts, the firefighter contract that ended 7/123. So we're currently negotiating that for a three-year period.
So then, my other question is, there's money in here for building permit software, which to me sounds like you would then be more...
Streamlined?
Streamlined, yes, and more capable of not necessarily doing things manually. So how does, how does that?
So I think this is a larger conversation in the land use office as far as like, if you look at capital projects, there was, I think, $75,000 to digitize the office next to them, which is filled with maps and paper. So I think going to this software, you know, the big driver here in the budget was the additional 12 and a half hours for the second admin, as well as this permitting software. The permitting software is actually coming from a quasi-government organization out of New Orleans. So this is a great deal as far as like permitting software goes. I sat in on some of these, the presentation for this, that's why I know a little bit about it. But it's a pretty good bank for our buck. They do a lot of digitization. It's going to streamline a lot of things. Currently, right now, it's pretty manual, so there's a lot, it's pretty time-consuming. But that office, when we talk about land use, that encompasses the building department, zoning, you know, zoning, zoning board of appeals, wetlands, the natural resources, planning, there's like, you know, eight or nine different commissions and departments within that one office. So where I came from in Brookfield, that department had four full-time admins. So I'm not saying that was over, you know, understaffed, I mean, we're understaffed or they were overstaffed. I'm just saying, you know, they're, they're, if you spent 15 minutes downstairs, those two admins are running around doing about 15 tasks in those 15 minutes.
So for that permit software, is that a one-time or a yearly 25,000?
A part of that is implementation. I believe the bill was just shy of $2,000. I think it was like $1,950 a month. So it was right around, I think it was right around $20,000 for the subscription and then $5,000 for the implementation. So it could come down a couple thousand dollars in the second year.
But it's still going to be a big goal.
It's still $20,000 a year, yeah.
It's never going to come down.
The one good thing is, this is, like I said, a quasi-government organization, so they're not driven by profit. They're, the money we are paying them covers overhead and then a little more. And the name of the organization is MGO. I don't know exactly the initials. I have the acronym somewhere, but you could just type in MGO, building software, it'll pull up, and you can read about it. They're very transparent. So really, it just pays for overhead and a smidge more to cover, you know, building out the infrastructure. So it was a, it was pretty interesting software. I've never seen one from a quasi-government organization willing to give it to other, other places.
Will it have much of an impact on the IT infrastructure? Sounds like it's a pretty comprehensive package, and I'm just wondering...
I think it was cloud-based. So I think it's just literally logged into a website. I don't know that 100% though. I will revert back to Mr. Garci, the building official, talk more about that.
So would that also cover training to use it? Is the goal to implement that?
The goal is to implement this for 7.1, I believe it is. So as long as it stays in the budget here, I believe our goal is to implement it over the next couple months to get going for 7.1, because I believe the current software we're using is sunsetting. So that's why we're, we're trying to go to this new, this new software. So I don't believe the software we currently have is supported, and it's pretty archaic. It's pretty tough to run reports from it.
Can I, can you explain to me? You know, we're spending $20,000 or $25,000 for software to streamline, and then we're increasing the human number of hours that people are doing. So what are we getting for the software? I mean, it sounds like the software is taking more time.
Without, you know, having the building official speak for his department, I'll kind of just piecemeal it together, but I think the town will get a better product as a whole. I think it'll streamline building permits themselves, the timing of them. And it's, even though this is sitting in the building department as building software, this is going to run the entire land use office. So if you have a swimming pool, I'm not sure about the health side of things, because Legulate Health also is in that office or has an office within that office. So I think it'll streamline their operations and make it more efficient. I think right now, they do a lot of manual reports, and I think we are getting, we're increasing the hours in the building department to have the full-time two admins, but if you went down there at any given time, I think, I think they've always needed two full-time admins. They were just making do those two days, the full-time admin, the second admin wasn't there, right?
You know, I think what probably would have been helpful, first of all, is to see like, how, how has the, the office been impacted? Are there more building permits, you know, being issued than ever before? How is the development that's going on in the town impacting how busy the office is to, you know, so without that sort of data, you know, brings up those questions.
Yeah, it's all questions.
So maybe, you said David has been out, so maybe we could follow up with him and see whether he could provide any sort of data that would support.
Okay.
Yeah, because inclusive in that data could be the time for permitting from when somebody does an application till when it's processed, till then, when it's approved.
Yeah, I think that's a big part of it.
That's got to be a big part of it. And then additionally, with the, the software, will it enable remote access so that if need be, folks can work from home to be able to accomplish some of these tasks?
So we, the town, we don't do work from home really for these, this type of work, but, but I understand the sentiment.
Any other questions on that? No. Sorry.
I'll get some more information when you come in.
Thank you. So next on the agenda is Class Center 113, Building Maintenance. We have Mr. Bergaw here, ready to take the stand.
Thank you very much, Joe Bergaw, Director of Public Works, resident of the town. Thank you very much for having me. I will be talking on the next three. There's Department 113, Building Maintenance, which we'll talk about now, 317, Highway, and then I'll be talking about Engineering after that. Should we talk about first? I'm sorry. So I just really want to start, because we do have a good-sized department. I wanted to preface the presentation by acknowledging just so everyone knows, and I think they do, how great the work of the Highway Department, and I'm so proud of these guys. There's 23 people, the team, there's 23 people in the Highway Department, there's seven in Building Maintenance, four members of the Engineering Department, and they, they're, we're responsible for the 114 miles of roads, like 15 miles of sidewalk, all the other things, common trees, streetlights, all this stuff. That's what we come under. The reason I'm saying this is, we get it as far as budgets are tough, sitting in front of it, we always try the best we can. I actually did want to hand out something. I checked with the Director of Finance, too, but I wanted to give you a little something. It just gets a little perspective.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I put three little buttons so you can drop it in your...
Thanks, Joe.
What I'm just showing you is that you got in the first line, you got that this is 10 years of budgets, and I'll be quick on this, but there's 10 years of budgets, town budget, total budget of the town, top line, general government, which we're talking about here, border bed, and obviously, I understand the importance, my kids went to school here, the debt, capital outlays, that's all the big stuff. But now, specifically departments, now, and I'm not picking on the police, I certainly like what's going on, but I have four departments, I have the police and then ours. What I'm showing here is over the last 10 years, the highway budget is up 3.3% in 10 years. So you divide that by 10, it's .33. Engineering budget is down in 10 years, and the building, and the building maintenance is up 25%. Now, in the building maintenance, we also were absorbing over all these years, the fire protection of the town. We, we took on a public, the public safety building. So I'll get into this, but just, I like to give a little perspective of, you know, when we sit here, and I've been in this position for 10 years, and I sit in front of the Board of Finance every year, I get it. We do everything we can to keep, our budgets are always very tight, and I'm very proud in driving around town that you're not dropping into huge, you know, potholes, and we take this seriously, and I think these numbers show. So I think it was helpful to see that, I think we're trying as best we can. So we're going to get into Department 113.
113 first?
Yeah, 113. 113 was on the agenda, so I will stick with your agenda. The best way I would like to do is just kind of hit the highlights and obviously jump in and, you know, at any point, ask me questions. It's no pride to what I'm giving here, but I'm just, so the first line is the custodian line. We have custodians throughout. We have one person here that's 30 hours. We have a 30-hour person at the public safety building. We have two custodians at the Community Center, one during the day, one night. And for all the people, everyone's been in the Community Center. It's not even a custodian over there. They're like a master of ceremonies, you know, and Kristen's over here. Very rarely do they even get the chance of doing a lot of cleaning, because they're too busy moving tables and moving operations, as she knows. And so it's a very important job. One of the things of why that number's sitting at 12% is what we don't have is really much of building maintenance of people that are painting, people that do carpeting, people are doing fixing things, light bulbs, all this stuff. So when you're stretched in on cleaning stuff. So we do have in this budget a little extra hours to have that building maintenance function of having someone. We're actually using someone right now in a smaller capacity, but we're trying to, it's a local, younger, you know, 20s, some guy that's working for us right now, his dad actually works the Highway Department, and he's doing a phenomenal job, and we'd like to keep him on, because if we don't do the proper maintenance of these buildings, you can clean the carpets as much as you want, do all of those stuff, and then everything else is going to fall in. So, you know, that's why that number's sitting up, because we are supporting in this an additional 20 hours for, for someone that's helping us with building maintenance. The second item of thing is 314 is the overtime. And for those that were on the board last year, I don't know if you recall this, but it became a big conundrum of why there was, this was, so there was, there's very little, there's not much overtime for building maintenance. We try to keep it down. It's like alarm calls and, you know, a little bit extra work here and there. But the biggest thing is on the weekends, coverage of the Community Center, that's what the overtime was last year. The reason I, when I say last year, is this current fiscal year. That was cut 10,000 last year. So I've had discussions with senior center, I had discussions with library, and like, so we don't have the coverage, so either we're closing this building, because I'm not bringing the coverage, the staff that's there on the weekend at the library or someone that is going to clean the bathrooms and do all the other stuff, or some other scenario. Well, we did the other scenario this year is that my budget, or the building maintenance budget had to chip in a third of the overtime cost. The library's chipping a third, and the parks and rec is chipping in a third, and that's what we're getting through this year, because we had a cut and we're taking it seriously. But then you have the cut, and this is unfortunate what happens, is like, no one wants you to close the senior center, so what do you, the senior, the community center, so what do you do? You figure it out. So this budget now puts back the full funding, so that's why that number seems at 83% increase, went from 12,000 to 22, because this properly funds to have someone there eight hours on Saturday, four hours on Sunday. That's up to the boards whether they keep it, and we had a long talk about this, the board assignment, and they ended up keeping it. That's up to this board, but I just want to be fully transparent of what that is, is, you know, I'm not blowing up and thinking that there's all this extra overtime. This is to keep the senior center open on the weekends as far as the coverage, and it is definitely needed. That building's 33,000 square feet, and again, during the week, they're mostly shuffling things here and there, so it allows us to keep that building as clean as possible, and it also arms the building, or opens building up in the morning, arms it in the afternoon, and all the bathroom cleans and stuff like that. So that's, that's a big, one of the big increases in this, in this budget.
So just between 311 and 314, is there an actual add to staff or just more hours?
So more hours in 314, there's, there's someone in 311 right now that we're paying, you know, 15, 20 hours, and it's not full-time, a benefit position, and we're proposing as a benefit is 32-hour, four days a week, eight hours for the building maintenance in line 311. That's, that's why that number's up at 12.43.
So it's increased hours in both of these two lines?
The first one, yes. The second one is just to meet the minimum of keeping the, so it's more, yeah, it's more hours, but it's to keep, it's to keep the Community Center open on the weekends in, in that capacity.
Yeah, I'm just trying to figure out, you know, where, when we add to staff and then all the other things that go along with it in terms of benefits and stuff like that. So I'm just, because there wasn't like the narrative in there, so I just wanted to make sure.
He has an answer for that. So in discussions with the first selectman regarding the building, building maintainer position, I think we call it?
Building maintenance.
Building maintenance. Building maintenance. There's 23 positions in the Highway Department. The proposed budget is to have the 23rd position be a seasonal position, and the benefits go from the 23rd position on the highway over to this position. So there's no added position, because it's a, it's a wash in benefits.
I basically gave up a full-time position in Highway for this, to keep the buildings maintained. I don't want to do that, but that's, I mean, if it was either that or lose the building maintenance person, which we're going to get ourselves behind in these... Maintenance person, which we're gonna get ourselves behind, and these buildings are gonna start looking a lot rougher, so, so, there really is no extra benefit things from this current year.
Yeah, so it's a wash with, um, full-time equivalents.
Okay.
So, as we go, and again, any questions as they come up? Service contracts, just jumped up a few, I mean, they, they go up, they, um, you know, you look at the different, um, elevators, HVAC, so that, that those go up on an annual basis. Two of the big things that disappeared from this, so, fire protection, just so everyone's aware what that is, it has nothing to do with Building Maintenance, it has everything to do with, the Water Department is charging the town for the use of having hydrants, so that when the Fire Department comes up, they hook up to a fire hydrant, so, that charge has been there for, since the Water Department's been there, and it's always been in this budget. It actually was in the budget still, at the Board of Selectmen, and after a lot of discussion, they said, move it to the Fire Services, 'cause it has nothing to do with Building, which is my recommendation, 'cause it really is confusing to people, they think it might be sprinklers, it might be, it has nothing to do with Building Maintenance, it has everything to do with the, the, the cost of the Water Department having the size pipes, and being able to have a system that's robust enough to provide fire protection for the town. So, I, I understand in future years, I won't pull out the same analysis, because I don't wanna do funny math, but that is disappearing from this budget, that sixty-nine, uh, the sixty-three thousand dollars of sixty-nine is gonna, is actually leaving this budget, but it's going to the Fire Services, I don't know what department they are, but, uh, whatever department they are. On the same note, the telephones, um, is also, and, and up until when we had an IT Director two years ago, I was overseeing the IT, well, now, as everyone knows, technologies like phones, they're all voice over internet, cell phones, everything on the phone line is, is IT, so, as far as the different, um, systems, the, the nutmeg network that powers all the, um, that, you know, the Town Hall Systems and all of that, that was all in the phone line, so that's also moving to IT, so, it's not disappearing from the town, it's going to a different department. IT is Department 109, so when you hear them talk, and you see all of a sudden, why is this telephone lines, remember that Joe said, it, it went from here to there, so it was just moving it. But it's now more in line with what's true Building Maintenance costs, which is what this line, this department, this one's all about. Electricity, um, the Town of East Slime's been very fortunate, the last five years, we've had a very favorable electric supply contract, we've been paying 6.7 cents per kilowatt hour, um, that contract ends December 31st of this year. The Board of Ed last, this current fiscal year, didn't have the same cycle as us, so they're paying like eleven cents, and we were paying like, you know, a lot less. They were smart, and we, we talk all the time, which is good, and their contract ended at the same time as our contract, we put our contract and the Board of Ed's contract in Water Department sewer, and pull, pull all the electricity together, and we just got a new contract, it was like nine point eight. Now, that's more than the 6.97 we have now, but it's a heck of a lot better than anyone else, like, if you're trying to go out, you're gonna get twelve, thirteen, and we're getting nine point something, so, that's why this line, the reason it's not going up 30% is it's a half a year, and also, um, there's, um, you know, it's, it's only a portion of your bill, 'cause the bill's supply and distribution, and, um, and there's one other, the Community Center was on a higher rate, and so, that's not gonna affect the Community Center as much, so.
Have we ever used an energy consultant?
That's who we use. We, we.
But I mean, not just to negotiate a rate, but to look at our facilities and.
Oh, yeah, no, they, they've looked at, yeah, we have a lot of energy efficiencies and all, like, that's when we moved to natural gas, um, at the Community Center, we've done all kinds of, all, all the lighting's all LED, oh, but we looked at, but, um, the energy consultant for negotiating is through Connecticut, um, the CCM Energy, is, so all the, all the towns in Connecticut pretty much go through them, they put, they put it all out to bid, and as I said, becau- because we were able to put the Board of Ed numbers together, it got us an extra, you know, one and a half cent lower than what we would've probably got, so. And then the last line, which is a good thing, is, um, heating and propane's going down, 'cause, um, uh, believe it or not, our biggest energy consumers, this building, Town Hall, Public Safety Building, Field Services Building, are all on propane, the Community Center's on natural gas, propane, we've been able to negotiate really very, very favorable rates with the propane, the only ones were left were on fuel oil, the fire stations, so, um, that's why, by getting those better, negotiating those better rates for, uh, the fuel sources, we've been able to save a lot of money, which shows the 122 go down to 105, so, I don't just put the 122 and go up a little bit, down a little bit, it's all based on how many gallons you use, and what you're getting it for, so, that's how we build the budgets. That's, that's the Building Maintenance Budget, if you have any questions, I'd like to answer them, please. How's that?
Yep.
All right, so 317, that's the bigger of the budget, so that's Public Works Highway Sanitation. I, um, I kid Kevin, it's life, liberty, and the pursuit of garbage pickup. This is, this, we don't mess with people's garbage, they, they, a lot of towns, Monville, a lot of towns, Groton, that garbage is not part of your taxes, in East Slime it is, and, we hear about it, 'cause, and, there's, East Slime, Ward from the Lunn, are the only towns that pick up ourselves, um, all the other co- towns around are, have contractors, those contractor rates are going through the roof, 'cause they can, they can charge you whatever, so the fact that we're, we have our own staff that do a very good job in doing it, but it's certainly, um, but that's part of this budget. So, I'll go down on lines, um, to 211, PWD is Public Works Director, PWDD, Public Deputy Public Works Director, Highway Superintendent. You're gonna start hearing this theme with all the other departments, anywhere where it's unaffiliated, it's zero, 'cause they're, they're carrying any kind of salary increases in a, um, wage contingency line, so just to let you know that, you're gonna hear that theme. But back to, um, back to regular payroll, um, it, the reason it's up 6.57 is, um, we have the contractual, um, this is, this is the third year, so our people are in UPSU, that's the main, uh, town employee union, which all these members are, and, um, if you're not top stepped, you're getting 2.75 GWI and 2.5% step. But there are some people that are due for, um, upgrades, and we're factoring that in, because right now, our pay scales are, are, are lower, they're three, four dollars lower than other towns, so I gotta make sure I keep, um, some of these upgrades as people get to equipment operator level, to keep them in there, so that we can, uh, try to retain our talent, 'cause we, we have some great staff. Overtime, you know, you see us out there for whether it's celebrating Slime, or the Light Parade, or, there's all kinds of things, and they love seeing East Slime people out there, all, well, that's money, and so, um, this year, we did try to, I think on the, the Friday after Thanksgiving, it's like Thanksgiving's off and the Friday's off, so we tried to save money by picking up double collection on Wednesday for Thursday, and Friday for Monday, oh my God, it was like life, liberty, and pursuit of the garbage pickup, like, we were getting hammered on social media, but, um, that was, that was a cost save, I was trying to save money, um, because, otherwise, I got double collection out on Friday, but, they don't wanna hear that. So, we are trying as best we can to look at overtime, but it, there's, we're trying to still keep the services to the people, so, whether it's our roadwork, um, doing so, that, that, that overtime line has been under pressure, so I tried to put some extra money in it. Line 200, Services 224, um, it went up by, or, I'm proposing it up 12,500. Another common theme you're gonna hear with this line and a few other lines, is I'm putting them back to what they were, were cut at last year, like, I had, this budget had about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars in cuts last year, so anytime you cut it, it, not only, you can't keep up the services, you actually step backwards, so when you try to put it back the next year, it looks like you have a 7% increase. So, this, this road reconstruction line, that's, that's the one, that's the potholes, that's the drainage, that's the everything that goes on in town, 'cause there's not a lot of other places, that's where you do it, 'cause you can't plan everything, there's a lot of calls that come in during the year, they want this, they want that, and, uh, that's the line that we buy, that, that buy the, the, uh, precast drainage structures, all the pavement, all the, um, the flaggers, all the different things coming out of that line, so it's a pretty essential line, and, um, I'm trying to put it back up to where it was. Again, tree maintenance, um, put in fifty thousand last year, was cut to forty thousand.
Can I back up?
Oh, absolutely.
Just to the, um, to the five thousand in the traffic calming measure?
Sure.
I thought we approved that in the Public Safety last year.
Approved what?
Having the added, um, uh, the redo.
Yeah, so what we've been doing, the five thousand is pretty much every year, we try to get one digital speed sign, but we also look at, uh, one of the things that we're doing, um, we're gonna be looking at this year is, and you start seeing in other towns, it might not seem like much, but if you're driving along on a road, oh, here, like, let's say Grand Street, it's fifty-two feet wide, you have the double yellows, and then each side of the road is twenty-six feet wide, so it looks like you could, it's just looked like a Speedway. You can put a white edge line, twelve feet out, and this is where you gotta drive, well, those white edge lines cost money, if we're, we're gonna start looking at more roads in town where we can put the white edge lines on the outside, what it does to the driver is it makes them tighten up, but they have to stay in their lane, and it gives the extra few feet back to the, whether someone's walking on the side of the road, or whether, you know, so it does slow people down.
And I'm all for, you know, getting people to slow down, I'm just remembering that we had a, you know, purchased a digital speed sign.
Yep.
In the pub, in the Public Safety Budget last year.
I, I was, they, they, they never, I don't, I, they, they didn't tell me that, 'cause they've never bought us, I don't think the PD's ever bought us a sign, we always buy them.
Yeah, that's my recall.
Yeah, I, I'm not aware of that, I mean.
I just wanna make sure we're not, not doing the same thing in two different.
Yeah, we're the ones that put those signs up, they don't, they don't, um, and the, all those signs that you purchase, they're smart, they, you can get data from, and they're not just sitting there flashing, you know, what is, the, 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 the average daily traffic, you know, you know, that, you know, there's some crazy person that drives through there at seven to eight, that goes eighty miles an hour, it will tell you, so, it, it gives, so we get all that information, and we give it to the PD to say, this is when you should do radar, um, so, they're, they're actually pretty smart signs.
Yeah, I'm, that.
Yeah, I, I don't think it's, I don't think it's, I don't, I don't think PD should have one of those, 'cause that's been, we, we've been buying.
Rich, aren't you, don't, don't you recall this?
I, I recall that it was in Public Works rather than Police.
All right.
So, I think I remember this a little bit?
Yeah.
I think that there was questions asked when the police were presenting, and then they said, the speed signs are out of the Public Works Budget.
Okay.
I think that, I, I remember those conversations.
Yeah.
Um, and I just went back to look, I think the conversation came up, because I believe that five thousand was cut and maybe put back in, or there was, I think you had the question about that, right, Rich, last year, if I remember?
Yeah. Thinking we would lessen the need for police officers with those signs.
Okay.
Um, one question, Joe.
Absolutely.
You mentioned about Director and, um, Associate Director or Assistant Director.
Deputy, yep.
That we've got a zero now, that, that it's being held in salary contingency at this point. At some point, we will get an increase, do you have a feeling what that will be, or Kevin, or? Because th- these are not union positions, so it's not a negotiation, or how's that work?
So, the, the Board of Selectmen has a, a committee, um, that is discussing, um, salary adjustments with the non-affiliated group, um, and I believe they'll make a recommendation to the Board of Selectmen, and ultimately, that'll probably trickle down to, uh, the Board of Finance before the budget. Or if it happens after the budget, we'll just do a, a budget adjustments, budget transfers. So, it's still ongoing, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah.
Yep.
Nothing's been said, but the Board.
And then that will appear in next year's budget, so.
Yep, so we've, all the, so the, uh, I carry a salary contingency, we carried one last year, for about three hundred and fifty thousand, for, uh, 'cause last year we had three open union negotiations.
Right.
This year, we have one open union negotiation still, uh, and the non-affiliates as well, so we're carrying about two hundred thousand dollars for that.
Okay. Of that three fifty last year that you were carrying, did that about equal what the increases in salaries were that into this year's budget?
You know, Rich, I don't know off the top of my head, um, it definitely covered here also, if it came back to you, with the, with the contingency request, but, um, yeah, I don't, I don't have that number off the top of my head.
Okay. I'm just trying to get a feel for what next year might be impacted by this year that looks like it's zero, but really won't be zero.
So, the, so while the department will definitely go up with an amended amount, the, the general fund as a whole.
Will stay the same.
Yeah, because it's in there already. Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question about the, the road repairs, so is that, so basically, is the process, if people have called in, and you respond to them right away, or do we have a list of issues that you weren't able to address because of the cut last year, and now, there could be even more added to that? I'm just trying to get an idea of how the process.
Well, there, I mean, they, when they call, so if you call, and you say, I have ponding in front of my house, the puddling in front of my house, we, we go out there, take a look at, oh wait, it's all flat out there, we have to put drainage in or something like that, so if we had to put drainage in, then we have to figure out what the materials are, and also that, so, that's where this is. We get calls all the time, and we basically, if we don't have it, I don't have a specific list of people that have been pushed out, but we keep saying it's on the list, and they get annoyed, it's on the list, but we, we work through it, because we have talented staff that, that can do it ourselves, in-house, with our equipment, um, it just, uh, we just need the funding for the materials, so it, it's, I, I, the main point I'm saying is, it's such an important, to, to do all the things that, I think we're proud of, to make sure you drive around this town, that's where most of it's being funded, as a road recon, 'cause all these other lines, trees and straight lights, streetlights and fuel and all this stuff are very specific, that one line encompasses everything else, so, it, it's, it doesn't, I mean, it's, in our opinion, it's not a lot of money to sit there to be able to, I mean, if you buy, uh, a bunch of catch basin structures, it could be thirty thousand dollars, you know, so this, the materials aren't cheap, um, but it's, it's a very important line, and it gets a huge bang for the buck of the people that call up, and then, you know, not this year, you know, we just do it, because we have the funds in that account to do that drainage job that, um, and we just bang those out.
Thank you. Are there issues in town, like, where you're like, oh, if only I had the money, this, this neighborhood has this, you know, huge issue, and?
Yes, all, all, all over. So, you asked a question, so I will tell you. Drainage is gonna become a huge issue in this town, and because drainage is all underground, you don't see it, a lot of the pipes we use are corrugated metal pipe, all the corrugated metal pipe, the water runs in the bottom, it sits in the pipe, rots the metal pipe out, and it starts deteriorating. When it starts deteriorating, it starts collapsing, when it starts collapsing, you have sinkholes from above, and one of you, the resident, we have one down in Old Black Point Road, the, the water's been trapped down there, well, that's, 'cause there's a tree root driving through our drainage pipe, couldn't even get a root cutter to cut it out, now we're gonna have to cut thirty feet of pipe, replace the pipe, and stuff like that, so there's a long, long, long list of things that we need to do to keep up, um, to, to make sure that we don't have issues. So. Tree, tree maintenance, I did, one, one point of this, I put the fifty thousand, but, just because the Board of, so I can borrow up, this doesn't even include all the work that Eversource does for us, and obviously, Eversource should pay for, but I bet you ten to one, Eversource pays, uh, by fifty, sixty thousand dollars a year in tree work, I've worked with Eversource all the time, if they can take it down, it's not on the town's dollar. If it's anywhere near wire, there, ever so, I just want this board to know, Eversource is fantastic for us to work with, because I think it's a good, a big part of why the Town of East Slime, and a lot of the, knock on wood, and a lot of the storms have been having less power outages, 'cause we've been pretty proactive of, um, taking down trees and on wires, I was driving the northern country, and, oh my God, don't look up, like, there's so many trees that are dead, that you could spend a lot of money, and we try to work with Eversource to take as many of them down, but by having it cut from fifty to forty this year, really puts, uh, people, 'cause if there's a hazard, you gotta take them down, and I'm the tree ward, and technically speaking, if it has to be taken down, I have to take it down and ask someone for money, 'cause it's not, it has to be taken down, it's a liability. Going along, um, Services Contract Operations, SCARA tipping fee, jumping up 10.10%. First Selectman is Dan Cunningham, and Kevin Gervais went to a powwow at Camp Net, three, four months ago, of like a, talking trash, and it was like, I, I'm the President of SCARA, the Regional Trash Authority, and it's pretty scary, the cost of trash in the state of Connecticut is going through the roof, and, and, that, that the Town of East Slime is part of SCARA, is a phenomenal, phenomenal value to town, we, we are like so much under what everyone, I mean, we're paying sixty-one dollars a ton, where everyone else is paying a hundred and five, so, but we're trying to, our contract is another six years, our contract, SCARA's contract, and so, what we're trying to do is put ourselves in a position that seven years from now, I don't come and tell you that this line's gonna go up by a hundred percent, so we're trying to get up to market value quickly, and also trying to have the towns, you know, reducing, so, um, you're gonna see this 10% increase almost every year in trash, trash costs money, Town of East Slime, you get it for free, so, you know, um, that's something that we really gotta be careful of, because, um, even the cost of recycling is going through the roof, so if you, if you hear anything about it, because, um, even the cost of recycling is going through the roof. So if you, if you hear anything about it, but the SCARA pays for our recycling, so, uh, we got a great deal, but it's going up ten percent. So that ten percent could be a lot worse. On a positive note, the bulky waste, um, that was through, uh, the cost of bulky waste, we used to bring it up to Willimantic Waste, and we used to have them haul the waste. I don't know if the members on the board, a few years ago, we bought a haul truck, um, and we have forty-yard roll-off trucks that we can haul, so we negotiate contract with CWPM that's, um, a lot closer, and we use our trucks, so that's where the savings is, is we're saving a lot of money by hauling it ourselves at a better rate to New London instead of driving our trucks up to Willimantic. So that, that, that was, um, anywhere we can do, we can have savings. Fleet maintenance, um, our fleet, our four mechanics, they, they maintain everything in town, all the PD cars.
Joe, could I go back to that?
Absolutely.
Do you know, like, the cost of the truck, like, how many years did it take to recoup the cost of that one, the savings, by doing?
Well, we've been using it every, um, it's hard to put, put a specific number on, except we're, well, we're saving thirty thousand this year. So the cost, um, every year, if we, if it costs, I don't know what the exact number, but if it costs us twenty-five, it's for the financing truck, but we're saving thirty, it's, it's basically saving itself right away.
So, I just wanna make sure that.
Well, we're, we're in control of our own destiny too, because that, just with the cost of fuel and everything that, these towns, and, and we were in this condition, if, if you're expecting contractor to come pick it up for you, they're gonna charge you these days whatever they want to. Now, we have the ability to bring it ourselves in our truck, and all we're paying is fuel and our driver, but we control our destiny. And, oh, by the way, if it's a rainy day, we could bring five loads on a rainy day when we're not doing something else. So we, we have the ability to move it whenever we want to. So, um, that, that truck has definitely paid for itself, and, and it will save, keep saving us money, a- as those costs keep going up.
I'd just like to, like, tie those two things together.
Yeah, no, I appreciate it, 'cause I, I think we're doing, it's, it's kinda, we're trying to do everything we can to save money, but also not, um, sacrifice the services. Fleet maintenance, uh, there's been a lot of pressure on this line. I mean, you can only imagine, I mean, if you brought your own car in or something like that, it's like the cost of parts and supplies and, um, you know, unfortunately, the, the, the town's fleet is growing, and as it grows, um, you know, it, it, that's more stuff to maintain. So we, that, that's a line also that got cut this current year, and it's, it's tough, because we have, I'm not putting vehicles on the road that aren't safe, so we're gonna have to fix them, which, if that, if, if we have too many repairs, it's gonna have to come out of road reconstruction or something else, because we have, I mean, top areas, you gotta fix your trucks, or tr- all your vehicles, and, you know, between Parks and Rec and Police, um, all the, all the highway sanitation trucks, we, we, um, our mechanics do the Board of Ed, um, they do water and sewer, they do the fire, they can help with the fire trucks, they do help with the senior, senior vehicles, although certain inspections have to be done professionally, so. Moving along, um, the two big lineup, safety equipment, it's, it's, uh, safety equipment training is, I added two thousand dollars. There's a lot, we have a lot newer staff. I bet, I bet almost forty percent of the highway departments, probably less than four years. Uh, we got lucky this year, not only because we didn't have to plow a lot, but we had a lot of new plow drivers. So if we had a lot of snow, I was gonna be in trouble, 'cause I was gonna get all the calls that, you know, everyone plows differently, they rip out, I mean, when you're newer, you, you, and you don't have a lot of plowing experience, you rip out people's yards and stuff like that. So, um, you know, getting the proper training to these guys, to make sure we have some funds. Storm materials and supplies, I am adding some funds to this. I was asked a question in the Board of Ed, well, okay, it was a light winter, you know, so that's good, do we save money? Well, this year, I, I had ninety thousand dollars cut from that storm last, so we basically broke even, because I was gonna be in the hole if we had a tough winter. And I don't, the, the, we don't come back to the Board of Selectmen, Board of Finance, when it's a tough winter and ask for more money for salt and overtime, so, um, you have to kinda budget according to what are average winter. This, this winter was, was pretty light. So that's why, um, the storm materials line went up. Fleet fuel came down a little bit. We were able to negotiate a better fuel prices for next year, when that impacts, that also saves money on the Board of Ed's side and their buses, uh, senior center buses, all the, all the, all the town, police vehicles. I, we, we, we're the ones that purchased the fuel for the town, so, um, that saves some money. Streetlights, one of my prouder things, 'cause, you know, seven years ago, we purchased the lights from, uh, Eversource and then re, re, um, relamped them, and, uh, that line was two hundred and thirty thousand dollars seven years ago, and now it's sixty-seven, and we're holding, uh, it's, it's only going up seventy-three, uh, seventy-three, 'cause some of our, um, the cost of having Eversource, um, and I remember, it was, we had lights, I always, so many times, if a light's.
Their time was a charm, but it's been on for the whole year now.
But if a light's out, we don't, we don't produce, we don't produce power, we produce, make sure that the fixture works, and so I still have to work with Eversource in getting them out there, and, and in a case like Paul's neighborhood, if it's underground power or something like that, there might be some kind of contractor hit the line or something like that. But there's still costs of keeping this, that I had to pay Eversource to do some work. But we manage all the streetlights ourselves. If someone calls the office or emails us, uh, we, we put together a list. I, I hire an electrical subcontractor, we do it all in-house to try to do that maintenance, and it saves a lot of money. And town aid road is just, um, is, that's just a grant from the, um, state, so, and if you notice, that's gone down like it used to be. In two thousand twenty-three, that was three thirty-nine, and now it's, now it's three fourteen. So as the costs of asphalt and concrete and everything's going up, the funds are going down. So again, it gets back to that we're doing the best of what we have, so. Any questions on the three seventeen? Alright, thank you.
Do you wanna do capital?
Uh, I can.
Which one are you doing, highway first?
Um, well, if I'm like.
What's that?
It's your whole, uh.
Okay. Alright, so, going down the list of, uh, capital, start with road bridges and paving. Uh, we, we've been, we've been putting aside eight hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for the last ten years to try to, that's almost like kinda the break even. We take the, the town aid road money, the three eighteen, which was three forty, plus eight fifty, and that's what we put into actually road paving, or road, all that's the road improvements. That's not putting in drainage structures or that, that's the, that's the keeping the hundred and fourteen miles in, in good shape. Unfortunately, this year, that's moving to seven fifty, but on the positive side, working through Mr. Gervais, he'll be having this talk about cash capital and all that kinda stuff, but, um, that's, that's, what that seven fifty is, is to put into the roads. Uh, we have a five-year road plan, and we're trying to work our way through it. We've been doing a lot of roads in the middle of town and in the north, 'cause we have to get to the south. We need, we haven't done anything in the beach areas, and Giant's Neck, Black Point, Crescent Beach, you know, all we've been doing is patching, and, uh, there's a lot of roads down there, so we keep putting that off. Those roads are gonna start falling and disrepair. Sidewalk repair, just so everyone knows, townwide sidewalk repairs, that is a capital non-recurring account. That's only for just repairing, that's not for like, that's not gonna fund, that's no, that's not gonna fund two thousand feet of new sidewalks, nor is it any new sidewalks. That's, that's if we have a trip and fall or some kind of, you know, um, bunch of areas that we, we inspect our sidewalks every two years, and then sometimes we have a, um, company that comes in and slices any of the differentials. Like, if you have differential settlements, it comes and slices them. So it doesn't look pretty, but at least it gets it so smooth, and no one has an edge to trip on. So that's what that townwide is pretty important. That money keeps, keeps putting in that pot of money, so that if we have, you know, thirty thousand dollars work or ten thousand dollars work that we can, we can dip into. Highway acquisitions, the biggest line is still sitting here. We, we were looking for a two, like a dump truck and a rack truck, and some of these trucks are starting to get up there, but the, um, the, the garbage trucks are so imperative to the, to the service that we provide. The, our, our oldest truck right now is costing about twenty to twenty-five thousand a year in repairs, just to keep it on the road. Um, so it's just basically throwing away money at this point. Um, so when you get a new, and those trucks get a lot of, a lot of use. Um, so that, that, you know, we're really pushing to see if we can get this, this, to stay through the budget. Only a year and a half ago, that truck cost two hundred and ninety thousand, now it's four oh five, so figure the inflation on that in two years, going up a hundred and five thousand dollars.
Joe, is this in addition to what was funded through ARPA?
Yeah.
Okay, so it's a second garbage truck.
Yeah, yeah, when that, when, when, when that got funded, we were really behind on the garbage trucks.
Oh, okay.
All our trucks were like six, seven years, and they were really, um, now we have two newer trucks. This would be the third. Every day, we have three trucks on the road at a minimum, two on the, two, two, um, garbage, one recycling. And this would, this would be, um, you know, uh, this would be replacing a truck that I think is thirteen years old.
Oh, okay.
So, um, those trucks aren't cheap, but they, the people seem to like that garbage pickup. So, getting into municipal, uh, buildings and infrastructure, um, this building, we got a, um, oh, we got a complaint, but that doesn't matter, we got a complaint, it's the right thing to do. Um, we had to bring this building into ADA compliance. We need a lift in this building. Um, we don't have to have a full-fledged elevator. Um, you see them sometimes where you have a lift, it, you know, as long as it's safe, it just goes from floor to floor, and you just have a closure. We're looking to do that out here. The bathrooms aren't ADA compliant, um, the men's rooms are, we could tell you. But, um, yeah, so that's gonna be a lot of work. The front entrance, those ramps don't meet the proper grades, so we're gonna redo the front entrance, all this stuff, and everything has to be done, 'cause we're under consent by the Department of Justice by October of two thousand twenty-five, which is not this fiscal cycle, but at, that, that we're talking now. But we'll stretch, we, we push that date to specifically so that we can, we're gonna do our best in this next fiscal year to get all the stuff done, but if we don't, we have one more whack at trying to get all this done, stuff done, because the, uh, federal government's gonna be making sure. Um, that's LoSIP, so LoSIP doesn't really come out of the town, um, tax dollars. It comes out of a state grant, and that's acceptable. Then, uh, we have rehabbing Brookside, and I believe, um, well, you, you, the other. Yeah, we're getting there, but there's some of our historic buildings in town that really need some help. This one with the Brookside Farmhouse, it needs to be painted really bad, but LoSIP can't cover paint, paint jobs. So that's why you have a CNRE of, um, for painting, which doesn't look like it's there anymore. But you can pay for remediating the lead, that's lead paint on that, it's the old Smith Harris house. And, uh, there's a lot of rotted wood, so, um, but that's a LoSIP thing. The big nugget is, uh, and it's, is the, the community center, the community center roof, it's the original roof. It was, um, I believe the building's thirty-four years old. Um, it's leaking, this has to be done. You know, the reason why it showed a two-point-three number is, uh, we got, we, we had, we had an architect look at different options, and one of these are standing seam metal roof, which is, that'd be the two-point-three, but the architect's report came back that, um, that asphalt shingle roof would still do the trick on that building, and that would be for a lot less at one-point-four million. So that's why you're seeing the one-point-four. I'd highly recommend keeping that project in there, because, um, if we push that anymore, you're gonna start losing some of the structural integrity of that building, 'cause it's, that roof has had it. And I know this, you might hear that there was a feasibility study and what's going on with the community center, but we can't wait a few more years to figure out what a feasibility study of seven, eight, nine million dollars of the work is gonna be when your roof is leaking. So an asphalt shingle roof would be able to meet the needs, and if anything had to be tweaked, 'cause the, the architect that did the analysis for us of the roof was the same one that did the feasibility study, so they know exactly what's in the feasibility study. I made sure of that, so we're not, you know, the two we're talking, you know. So it, it's time, we, we really need to do that. We, you guys funded the, the roof for the, um, uh, the NFT main station this current year, which that's, that's, we opened bids on Thursday, and we had Station Two, which really needs to be done too, but we're kicking that out till twenty-five, twenty-six, because there's just a lot of stuff going on.
That one's really bad, too.
Yeah, that one's bad, too. Oh, yeah, they're, they're, they're all kicking, unfortunately, but we're trying to knock these out. But that community center is such a well-used building that we, we got, we can't lose, start losing the structural integrity of the building by having it leak all over. And then the rest of the items are, are typical, um, CNRE items. I'm trying to do the best I can. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, the last one in green that I really would like to see funded, um, in is, um, what is, is that? Is that CNRE? What's the funding source?
So, for the plant stand one?
Cash capital, yep.
The ninety-five thousand.
So, I wouldn't, uh, I'll buy, uh, uh, Plant Stand, what's the restaurant?
Rustic Cafe.
Thank you. Rustic Cafe, I don't know why. Um, right there is that dam. And that dam, if you've driven by, it's, it's had it. Um, it's, it's, and it's, that's, that's town property, so that's our dam. Last year, in the capital plan that the town approved at the town meeting, I put in, two years out, to be seven hundred fifty thousand dollars to fix that dam. Um, in the engineering part, we, we put together, my deputy director put together a steep grant last fall for five hundred thousand to get state monies to fix the dam, and we got a five hundred thousand dollar steep grant. And with, but we had to have a little bit of matching. There's the match, right there. And, you know, two, so, at last May, we were looking at paying seven hundred fifty total for the whole thing. Now we're talking, now I'm only asking for ninety-five, and that's it, and the dam should be done. So I, I think this is a slam dunk. If we can, if we can get to ninety-five, with the ninety-five we'll cover, it's fifty thousand to get all the, the permitting and all the contract documents all ready, then we have the steep grant for the five hundred, and then there's another thirty-five or forty for contract administration inspection, 'cause it's kind of a highly specialized thing to build that dam. But then, so with that ninety-five, we'll have taken a, a problem that the town has of what we're gonna do with this and solve it, for cheap monies as opposed to seven hundred fifty.
Did I, yeah, so, so you've mentioned seven fifty a, a couple times, or a few times.
Yep.
And the steep grant was about five hundred, and then the ninety-five is what the town's getting in?
I threw a bunch of different numbers.
So what's the?
So at the time, the seven fifty, I had no idea how much it was gonna cost.
Oh, okay.
So the five hundred is now fine-tuned information.
Oh, okay.
So, I mean, unfortunately, in this process, is sometimes, when you put the capital, like, we don't know exactly how much these things are. We haven't put them together, so you put a number out.
Yeah.
So that's where the seven fifty.
Oh, okay.
So when we got more into it and got, we spent some money on a real road reconstruction to do a little bit of study in this, uh, this year, to get some, um, engineering analysis on specifically how much it was gonna be an estimate, a probable, opinion of probable cost, and they said it was gonna be about five hundred thousand dollars to do it, so that's where the five hundred. And the nine fifty is, oh, by the way, it's gonna cost five hundred, but it's gonna be about ninety-five thousand dollars in engineering expenses to do the permitting and all of it. So those were all the seven fifty, five hundred, and the ninety-five, where they all came from.
I'm glad you went the direction you did.
Yeah, it's coming down, I don't know.
Yeah, it was a good direction.
So from seven fifty to ninety-five thousand is, is a win to solve a problem.
On another line, there's a line there that says maintenance of town dams.
Okay, thank you for that. So there's other dams, and maintenance of town dams, I think that's under LoSIP. So the way LoSIP works is, so long as it's in the capital projects, and something happens, um, we can put in a capital, a request to the OPM, 'cause LoSIP goes to the Office of Policy Management, so that's a placeholder. So if something happened to Daryl's and there's an eight thousand dollar repair, I can submit a LoSIP request for ten, up to ten thousand dollars, it's in the thing, and I didn't have to ask you for any money. So I have things in there as placeholders that we might not use, but they're smart to have them in there, because if it comes up, it has to be in the capital plan. So it's in the capital plan. So when the town proves it, you can show, the first Selectman has to sign it off. So we have extra things in there, and that's the reason, is we have extra stuff in there, just in case something happens. I got it covered, and then we can go get the money.
Is there, is there a maintenance plan, or, or some sort of, um, plan to examine the dams?
Yeah, ironically, we use road reconstruction money for that, so it gets back to, that's my bucket for anything. So, yes, if we do, if we, we, when we have dams inspected, um, a lot of times, we take it out of road reconstruction money, because I don't really have anywhere else to take it, and I'm, I can't, you can't do inspections out of LoSIP money, you can do repairs. So if, if, say, if the Darrow Bond had a bunch of, say, you had to take some trees down, or the inlet was clogged or something like that, that's what you can use for LoSIP, but you can't do it for inspections. LoSIP has to be used for actual things, not for inspections or, or plans or engineering.
What happens if, um, say, two dams fail inspection and it's more than ten thousand dollars?
Dan, I might come to you, but typically.
He'll be back.
Well, you, well, I'd never come to the board, because that's, so probably what I do is dip into road reconstruction. So it is a common theme, don't touch the road reconstruction if you can, 'cause that's what we dip into for everything. If fleet maintenance goes over by thirty thousand, road reconstruction. That's the one line I have that you can basically use, utilize, so you don't have to come back to the board. If we don't have it, then I'm gonna ask for more money.
Is there any downside to making that number higher?
Uh, there is a downside, 'cause you, you have to count for the total amount that you have available. Like, all those numbers add up to the amount that we have available, so there is a rhyme to, uh, rhyme to reason as far as.
So, Joe, um, every year is it, or every other year, Kerma asks for reports on all the town-owned dams?
Correct.
Is there four or five of them? Uh, there's not, there's a handful.
Yeah, there's a handful.
And so every year, we have to report to our insurance company.
That, and the DP requires us to do, it's every other year. But the ten thousand is not, I mean, if we have fifteen thousand, it, it's a reasonable number. Most of the time, if we have something, it's not gonna probably be more than ten thousand, or else it's a bigger project, and then I have to come, you know, but, um, you certainly could have an eight thousand.
But you certainly could have an $8,000 repair or something like that that, that would allow us to use those funds.
Yeah, we're just hearing a lot, you know, after that dam failed in Bosra, people are suddenly aware of the dangers of old dams. So, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, that's, that's why this plant stand is a steal, to be able to use a 500,000, steep grant, 95,000, get the thing done. I've been looking at that thing for years. It's, it's not in good shape. It really needs to be repaired. It's the waters kind of, everything we want in a dam is not, I mean, water coming through the concrete is not what you want.
Does the, uh, the bridge be affected by that, you have to replace the bridge?
No. Well, first of all, it's a state road. But, um, no, all, all the work is gonna be right at the dam. Believe it or not, that dam's about 30, 35 feet away from the face of the bridge right now. So, yeah. It, it's, it's, um, they already gave us like a temporary what they were gonna do, and that's, that was, that was part of the cost of opinion and probable cost. So, um, is that it on SIP items? Because, yeah, the only ones.
That's all you have, yeah?
Yeah. Does anyone have any questions on the CIT? Thank you very much.
I don't know whether it's a question for you or maybe, I'm just thinking about finalization of the land purchase. Is there, I'm just thinking of any, anything that the town is going to be required to do to maintain any of the property that was purchased? Does that, does it hit the budget in any way other than the actual purchase of the property?
Is that lien trust or town land? So, it is, um, the town officially closed on it. I don't know the exact date. I believe it was in the newspaper. To the best of my knowledge, the only impact the properties would have on the town's budget is going to be insurance, right? Because those three properties are now added to the insurance rolls. And then when we take out debt in August to pay back the $2 million of cash we borrowed against ourselves. But besides the maintenance, I don't believe.
That's what I was thinking of.
Yeah, I don't believe Park and Rec picked up any additional responsibilities. I, I'm not quite sure.
Roads that are on it anyhow.
Not that I'm aware.
Yeah, not that I'm aware of. Yeah, I don't, I, I'm not sure other impacts to our budget on that prop, those properties.
Hopefully not.
Yeah. I could ask Jerry, the Parks and Rec Director, if he has to pick up anything for those properties.
I doubt it.
Yeah.
But that's really passive.
Yeah, I think it's just really, most of it's just like open space and trails, I believe.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, I just, I didn't know whether there was any, you know, back roads through, especially, I was thinking of between, uh.
Like Brainerd or?
Yeah, Brainerd and over to Tyne Snack. No road in there.
Not that I'm aware of. No. All right, thank you.
Thank you. So, that brings us to the committee on Aging, Kristen, and 418. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah?
Thank you. You sure want to tell me when to click through?
Thank you, Kristen.
Hi, I'm Kristen Karamanica, the Director of the Senior Center. You can click. Uh, so this just is our missions and goals. What we offer, we offer programs, transportation, and social services. So, a few of our programs are fitness, recreation, art, games, education trips, transportation in East Lime, Niantic, Waterford, New London, Lime and Old Lime, social services, just to name a few. We provide energy assistance, renters rebate, Medicare assistance, case management, and town agency concerns. And again, that's just to name a few. We are considered a designated community focal point. And envisioning our future of the Senior Center, we just went through a site feasibility study. I'm just gonna briefly go through these. That's okay. Uh, you can click. Okay, our senior population. So, the sixty-plus plus population is growing rapidly. The state of Connecticut, we have 885,046, which is 25% of the state. In East Lime, we have 5,950, 31% of the population. So, as you can see, we're growing rapidly. Yep.
Over sixty or sixty-five?
Uh, this all was based on over sixty. East Lime, um, senior housing. We have a total of 538 units, and that's just units. So, with the, um, senior housing, you know, multiple people can be, you know, in those dwellings. The total right now is currently 538.
Are there any more on the drawing boards?
Yes, there are. Transportation, we have two currently, two, two buses currently. We're expecting another bus, hopefully sometime this summer. We've been waiting for a couple of years for that bus. And if you look at the chart of unduplicated riders for 2022, 2023, we had 179. Average number of riders per month was 282 for 2022, 2023. And the average number of rides per month for 2022, 2023 is 788.
So, is there, um, the transportation, do the people using it, what is their fee structure?
Uh, there's no fee.
So, do they have?
Provide a free, a free service. And we take them to medical appointments. We take them to the grocery store. We take them to haircuts. We take them to the Senior Center, you know, to get them out of their house and not be, you know, home alone. And so, it's.
Is there any?
And we're busy every day. We have to turn people away sometimes.
Is there a time of day that you, uh, have these rides, or like if somebody calls up at eight o'clock in the morning?
Twenty-four hours notice.
But if one person calls up, do you go out and pick that one person up, or you have to wait for a certain amount of people to request a ride?
Uh, no, no, we try not to turn people, you know, medical appointments are number one. So, that's gonna trump anything else. But we provide transportation Monday through Friday. I mean, I could see, you'll see on my goal sheet in the future, you know, seven days a week. We also offer Dial-A-Ride. So, they're limited to only 24 rides per year.
That's what I was thinking about with Dial-A-Ride, so.
Right, we do have Dial-A-Ride.
Do you know how many of the people that are using this for transportation are also using Dial, Dial-A-Ride, and are they going?
So, mostly they, they register with us and with Dial-A-Ride. So, it's pretty much the, the same people. A few do just Dial-A-Ride, and a few do just the Senior Center transportation. But pretty much when they register for us, they also register for, for Dial-A-Ride.
I was just trying to think, like, if, you know, everyone has to register for Dial-A-Ride first, and then when they exceed the number of trips, then they go to, you know.
No, they, they don't. Okay, any other questions? Program Services, next slide. So, Program Services. So, we have Meals on Wheels. So, for 2022, 2023, we served 9,010 total Meals on Wheels. And Cafe Lunches, we served 746. And I'll go back to Meals on Wheels. So, the number did drop, and the reason being because COVID, people are coming out more than staying home. Then Cafe Lunches for 2022, 2023 was 746. Unduplicated attendance was 1,790 people. Total program attendance was 21,595, and growing.
Just one more. Is there any, is there, are any of the programs based on means testing? Any of the services that you offer?
No, no. Uh, so here, again, is an example of social services that we offer. One program we do is the Renters Rebate. For 2022, we had 210 folks, and for Energy Assistance, 470. And I know for this year, for Energy Assistance, that number has already gone up, and so did Renters Rebate. And here's our operating budget. Um, so, the few changes here, for accounts 211 to 412, we had an increase in part-time driver hours, but we actually saved money because we don't have a full-time driver. She had retired. So, that number does look a little bit different. And also, for our 311, we had step increases, and we also hired a new social worker, and she's 25 hours a week. She works 8:30 till 1:30 every day. And then we added a quarter of the budget for our social worker. So, our social worker, we are fortunate enough to have the ARPA again for next year, and, um, that will pay until December of 2024. And then, um, a quarter of the budget, we asked Youth and Family and Human Services to take a quarter of the budget because she is working with Youth and Family as well, and then the other quarter is with us. And then for lines 215 to 241, just our costs are just up because of inflation. So, and also you'll notice, um, Program Services, we put that to zero. We decided the commission and meeting with Kevin and the First Selectmen to use the Tambary Fund for Program Services. And then 242 to 322, no big changes except eliminating the program cost to the town to use the Tambary Funds for program supplies and program subsidies.
Kristen?
Yes.
Could you explain what the Tambary Funds are? I'm not familiar with that.
Kevin, do you wanna say a little bit?
Sure. Um, so, Mrs. Ruth Tambary passed away about, I don't know when she passed away. It had to be recently. But she left the town as well as the library, I believe. She left the town about $94,000, as well as a certain money set aside that went to the Community Foundation of Eastern Connecticut, which pays us, you know, a couple thousand dollars annually in perpetuity. So, the idea is to use a part of the $94,000 that we received from Mrs. Tambary's IRA to pay for program supplies, program subsidy, and there's a third one, Program Services. So, it's about eight, $8,200, I think, a year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, and they said every year that number should be higher.
That's great because I, I was concerned when I saw that kind of dropped to zero.
Yeah.
One question, since Joe was mentioning he, his telephone and internet dropped to zero because it went to the IT department, will your telephone and internet line 201?
Yes, our number, our lines are.
Those are a little different, though.
Oh.
The, uh, real quick, again, the, the, the $23,000 in the building maintenance budget is for town-wide, the telephones in town, the actual, like, you know, pickup phones. This particular line covers cell phones.
And landline.
And the landline in the community center for, or in the senior center.
Correct.
So, they're, um.
Right, so our drivers have phones. Each bus driver needed their own phone. They were using their own personal cell phones. So, now they all have a, a phone. So, when they get, you know, to somebody's house to pick them up, and if they're not ready, they can give them a call, or if they pick them up at a doctor's appointment, they can call them if they're not coming out. So. And this new social worker, she has a phone, and I have a phone as well. And then the landline phone as well. Okay, any, any questions?
Uh, what is random testing?
Uh, the random drug testing. It's required for our, it's not required, but our commission and the Board of Selectmen, when we met, really encouraged us to put that back on, and that had gone up. It's $130 a driver, so they randomly get drug tested.
So, of course, I, I think it's admirable, all the work, you know, that you do, and it's a fantastic service to the community. But just because I've got that hat on here with, with how to pay for everything, like, what's there to stop someone from just using all of your services even if they have the funds to pay for them themselves? Like, is there, that's why I asked about the means testing before. How do we make sure you're not being taken advantage of?
Um, I feel the people that you, that call us for rides, they really need the ride. You know, folks drive to the Senior Center, our, all of our classes, exercise classes. We have great instructors. I mean, we could be paying, you know, a lot more for, um, other instructors. So, our classes are all, and, and the folks that can't, with the program subsidies, we're hoping maybe those folks, with the social worker we have now, too, we see people that are coming in for their renters rebate, the energy assistance, the people that need it the most. So, we, we really feel like we have a good.
Your knowledge of the people.
We do. We do. And our bus drivers are great. They tell us, you know, they see changes in folks, too, and. But the whole staff, the receptionist, social work, administrative assistant, we just all really know with the Meals on Wheels and the Cafe Meals, we really get to know. It's very personal. It's almost like a family over at the Senior Center.
Other questions, though? Other questions for Kristen?
Um, I did have just my, did you wanna go over my goals and my 10-year projection?
Kristen, I've got one to follow on.
Oh, sure.
The transiveness. Uh, I believe last year I had asked about need base and payment and such. That I, I, from being at the Senior Center and participating in some of the programs and helping to deliver some of the programs, I, I know there, there is a tremendous need by some individuals, and it's nice to hear you say that there are funds for those who cannot afford some of the, the fee-based classes and such. But I, I'm wondering if with the aid of the social worker, if more may be uncovered to. I, I know everything's running at capacity, but for the social aspects for folks, if there may be some individuals that just that $30 or $40 for a class might be too much of a strain for them, if there is a way to find those people and help them out? Just shooting from the hip, that, you know.
Yeah, well, we try to price, not that we make a lot of money, but we always try to, we try to make a little bit of money so then we can cover those folks that can't afford. So, for instance, we had a craft class. It was $15, and somebody came to us and they really wanted to do it. But we knew we could afford to just have them, you know, so we don't advertise it, but there's a little bit there that we can work with. And with the social worker, she works at so many agencies now. She's working with Care and Share, and Ledge Light, and Cactus Jack, and who's just helping tremendously these folks who are less fortunate.
And, and one thing that you didn't mention, that you did mention to me one day, was donations from places such as SIFT, that they donate baked goods to the seniors.
Yeah, SIFT has been wonderful to us. They donate baked goods to us pretty much on a daily basis. And now we have our new coffee and tea station, too, which has been a big hit. It was the AARP grant that we were awarded, the $5,000. So, it, it goes hand in hand. The SIFT, you know, is right there with the coffee, and so everybody gets to enjoy. It's a little, if you haven't been over there, you need to come see it. It's just a cute little cat day. Looks great.
Yeah, it's nice.
And people are enjoying it, and they're using it the way it should be. They're coming, they're sitting, they're having a cup of coffee. Been very nice.
Quick, quick question in relation to grants. Is there somebody who looks for these grants out there? Is that someone's job, or is it just kind of a random thing?
It's kind of random. The commission actually found this one and asked me if I would do it, and so, we. And so we received it, I was shocked, I was so happy. So we, we don't have a grant writer. But I'm also part of the Connecticut Association of Senior Center Personnel. And so all of our, all of us talk and so we communicate. The state also has a new field rep and she's always sending us some new grants. So we do communicate between all of us. And so that's where we find a lot of them.
Keep looking for them.
Yes, yes, so.
In the general fund, we have $12,000 proposed for a grant writer.
Yes, that would be so beneficial, that, that would go a long way. So just our 10-year projection, just as I can see it moving forward. And part of this was like from the feasibility study. So a fitness center, so expanding and renovating the senior center facility. Be nice to have a fitness center, a dedicated health and service area. And of course, more programs. Of course, increase in number of attendees, increase innovating quality programs, increasing services, more community outreach, advocacy, housing alternatives, aging in place, livable community. Transportation, it'd be nice not to have like 24-hour notice anymore. Staffing, I see some senior centers are actually going now to evenings and weekends. And marketing, improving community awareness and branding. And of course, with the fitness centers, looking for, you know, to more, maybe more grants, doing some fundraising, working with Parks and Rec to make some of this actually happen.
Thank you. Any other comments?
No.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then the rest of capital projects. I think Joe spoke to all of his. And I don't know whether.
So.
We wanted to go through any other.
So.
Or do you want to do it by department?
We could go, if we want to look at a high level, let me just make sure my screen's off. Sorry, hold on. We can go through them just at a high level. And then if you have any questions, just write them down.
Okay.
And just so everyone has a couple of days to kind of look at them and think about it. Would that work?
Yep, that makes sense.
Okay, because I know, you know, the police are gonna want to talk about theirs and all the other, all the other departments haven't had a chance to talk yet. All right. Hi, Dan. Okay, so we talked about, well, let's go up to the top here, right here. Okay. Working ourselves from the, from general government down.
You know what, and just in case there is anybody listening to us, do you want to just kind of go through, you know, the goal of, you know, how we propose this and what the process is and, you know, useful life and how we want to pay things? What, what your general idea of how we plan for capital?
Okay, well, can I, let me just pull one document up real quick while we're talking about this. It's kind of what the, the first selectman I have used as a guiding. Just pull it up real quick. Okay. So I think this is a good first starter. Okay, so can everyone, it's kind of hard to see, Dan, you've seen this before?
Yes.
Okay, so, and I can, I can print this out and share it with everyone afterwards. But really, what, what I did on this worksheet here was compared ourselves to some other towns within our DURG, our district reference group that the State Department of Education uses to kind of lump school districts together. Most of these are ours. The one bolded there, Madison, that is a DURG B. We are a DURG D. So we're, we're, we're the fourth, you know, we're in the fourth category, they're in the second category. I look to them for a lot of policies and procedures and kind of best practices a little bit. Where should we be, right? They're DURG, DURG B, how did they get there? How do we get there? So when we look at their, their town, they're a little smaller than us, they're under 18,000 people. Their budget is a little larger than ours. When really, we don't have to look at the numbers, it's really percentages, right? When we look at the Board of Ed as a percentage, we're 67%, they're 65 and a half percent. Town operations, they're 26 and a half percent, we're 25%. The ones I like to look at, debt and cash capital, right? Their debt, they pay less than 2% on debt. We are paying over 7% on debt. All right, cash capital, they are paying almost 6% of their budget with cash. Over, right around $5 million they're paying with cash, 5.5 million you could see right there. We're paying $500,000. So really, we need to break our reliance on debt and move towards cash capital, especially in an interest rate environment of, you know, 5%. So that is something, does this kind of give everyone an idea of where? So this is the foundation for our discussions on using cash versus bonded capital, right? Now let's go back to our spreadsheet here.
Kevin?
Yep.
The last column there.
Hold on, let me just shut this down so there's no other work paper up. Okay.
What is the, the burden, is that based on debt? Is that the amount of debt per capita?
This was just me using a quick little calculation of population divided by the total budget, right? So I just wanted to see what, you know, how many citizens, how many citizens are in each town? What's their budget? What's the burden per person really? If we're just high level breaking it down, number of people times the budget, right? We can see in East Lime highlighted, and the only reason it's highlighted in red is so everyone can go to the eyes. East Lime, roughly $4,600 per taxpayer or per citizen, right? Madison, you can see is much more, it's over $5,000. I'm not saying that's where we have to be, I'm just saying, you know, when you look at this, right? You know, Madison's fiscal picture looks a little, you know, they have less debt, they're less reliant on debt, more reliant on cash capital. That's where we need to be. So is that kind of, so that, that was really just a little statistical column just to say, okay, where do we stack up versus everybody else, right? And they're all pretty similar, right? A lot of towns in that $4,600, $4,700 range. Which I thought was, was pretty interesting, that they're right around that same, that same number there. So and then down here, what I did was just say, okay, the average, average Board of Ed expenditures is 59%. Where do we fall? We're above it. Average expenditures for town operations is 30% of the budget. We're 25, we're below that. Average is 6% debt, we're at seven and a quarter, we're above that. Cash capital, you see what I'm, I just wanted to see where were we compared to our peers, right? So everyone go with the spreadsheet, we'll go back to the capital spreadsheet. So capital, just so I can, we can work through the spreadsheet. Everyone has this spreadsheet in front of them, the board does, not you guys at home. But so when we look over to the right side of the spreadsheet, we have 20-year bond, 10-year bond, five-year financing and paid in cash. Really, what, what we can do is the first two columns on the left, 10 and 20 are bonds, obviously. That five-year has been historically, last decade or so it looks like, we've been taking out a lease every year. Last year we took out a $1.4 million lease and then a year before that was about a million and a, million and a quarter. So every year we're taking over about a million dollars. We're taking a lease, well, for the last couple of years, it wasn't bad when you're paying a percent, one and a half percent on a lease. Now we're paying 5% on those leases. So now instead of paying, you know, three, four, $5,000 for a annual interest payment, we're paying 50, 60,000. It's, it's much more conducive to start switching over to cash capital. So this spreadsheet kind of breaks that down. This column really is where we can also, all the cash projects, real quickly, add up about $2.6 million of cash capital requirements. If we go, if everyone flips to the front part of their book, the operating work, the operating summary, you'll notice the Board of Selectmen added $250,000 to cash capital to bring that number to a million. Okay, that's, John, it is on that front spreadsheet there. Right there, so at the top, if you go to expenditures, it says town operations, Board of Ed, debt, and I believe then capital. That capital line is cash capital, it's about a million dollars. Does everyone have that work paper in front of them? I could pull it up, it just takes me a minute. I could pull it, if, hold on one second, let me see. I might have it up. I do. This is what we're looking at right here. Capital, this is cash capital. So instead of taking out a bond or, or, you know, a loan, we're going to pay for it in cash. When we looked at Madison just a few minutes ago, Madison takes out $5.5 million of cash capital every year. We're, we're trying to push it to a million. Now, you notice on that capital work, that capital, the long spreadsheet there, current year capital, we have $2.6 million needed for cash projects. So we have a little gap here of $1.5 million. You know, we'll solve that by moving some items over to bond. But really, in this budget, we got rid of the leasing program, right? So I think that's a great first step in solving this. Instead of taking out a 5% lease over five years, we dissolved that, we got that done. So now it's really moving between the bond and cash. Instead of having three, you know, financing options, we're down to two. And, and maybe we have to take out another lease this year for 750 or something like that. We leased the garbage truck and maybe the Board of Ed capital projects and that'll be a $900,000 lease, something like that. But just starting the conversation to start moving towards cash capital, right? So now with all of that, before we get into the projects, do you have any questions?
What would you recommend for next year?
Million and a half, 2 million if we could, you know, depending on what the year looks like. But really, that number needs to keep growing. And we need to start, you know, reducing the reliance on debt and start paying for things in cash, right? Especially when you look at the 10-year capital plan, it's over, it's about $100 million. There's two long spreadsheets there in front of you. I gave everyone a summary, Rich has a summary right here in front of you. It's about $99 million, Rich, all the way to the right?
Yep.
That is without the high school, major recapitalization in 2030. And then in 2028, I believe that also leaves out major renovations of the central office, right? That doesn't address anything with, there's a few open items there too, on top of that $100 million 10-year ask. So is that kind of answer your question there, John?
So for this last year where we had the, the leasing as one source of funding for that five-year strategy.
Correct.
What types of things were we leasing?
Garbage trucks, the garbage truck we leased one year, the police vehicles, there's some Board of Ed stuff. But really, if we, that spreadsheet that Joe provided everyone, that was three-hole punched.
Yeah.
If you look at that, he breaks down the capital outlay every year. And there was a period of time, about 10 years ago, the, the town was putting $1.4 million in cash capital away. And you could see every year it dropped by about $100,000. Every, I mean, just, you know, 1.2, 1.1 million, it just kept whittling away to the $500,000 we were at last year. So we were going in the wrong direction for the last decade on that cash capital. It wasn't a problem because cash was so cheap. You know, we were in a zero, a relative zero interest rate environment. That's not, no longer the case. So with that, I'll start getting into the numbers. All right. So just going through general government, the first one, health and safety, AED replacements and supplies. Julie Wilson is our health and safety chairman. She's also the deputy emergency management director, so she will be speaking, I believe, next week. So she could talk to more about that. But AEDs require replacement batteries, replacement pads, things like that. So this is really a once in every couple of year request. If an AED needs to be replaced, we just have some money set aside to keep up on this health and safety issue. The planning and zoning vehicle was eliminated from the budget. Engineering CAD software and equipment. This is a annual recurring item here for the engineering department to get updated CAD software and equipment as, as, as it's written. The assessment reevaluation, it feels like we just had that reassessment. But next year we have another assessment coming down the pike. So we'll set aside another $75,000 and that should be enough to cover the revale. New ballot machines, that was initially put in, but with conversations with the town clerk and the registrars, we're feeling pretty confident that'll be covered by a grant when, when that comes out. The radio tower replacement, this is gonna, there's gonna be three items that really tie into this particular one. We have the $100,000, this is IT-related for the radio tower replacement costs. This is to move network switches, hard drives, all the infrastructure that's going to be needed when we install or have the new public radio tower installed at the public safety building or around the public safety building. So the, and not to skip ahead, but that $300,000 in the emergency management line for the public safety radio tower ties into this. The $100,000 is the IT portion, 300,000 is the construction portion of that tower. If you go a little further down to police, there is a radio tower communications base stations for 30,000 as well. These projects all tie into each other. So, and the, and the chief and Julie Wilson can, can speak more to the, the details if anyone has any questions about that. Going back to the general fund, townwide computer replacement for $15,000. Even though it says useful life of five years, I believe his initial request was for $24,000. And we said, okay, well, let's try to get seven years out of the computers. So it was cut back to $15,000 before it hit the spreadsheet.
How, how many computers does that represent? Three?
No, the computers are under $1,000 a piece, right around $1,000 a piece. But pretty much everyone now, you know, throughout town has a computer or a laptop or a tablet. So I think that gets him, I think the $15,000 was a seven-year rotation. But I believe he also is speaking on the 25th. So we can ask any questions then. Same thing with network switches, I believe that's, you know, the hardware portion of IT. Looking for that as well. And then office furniture replacement program. So really, I, I put this in here. I noticed some of the desks around town hall are about 50 years old. I was lucky enough to have, to purchase a new desk out of my miscellaneous supply. So I had a, a desk that wasn't, that wasn't that old. But there was a matching desk to my desk and Judge McDeMare probate had that. He also received a new desk this year in the budget. So I thought it was, it was fair, we sent both those desks off to the, to wherever they, the abyss. So really, that, the $10,000 that is left, that is really to update. I imagine that'll be in for the next couple of years. And that is really to renovate the offices, probably get you guys some new chairs up here. So when you're in a four-hour meeting, your, your back's not killing you by the end. And to just start going through the offices and if there's options to put some cubicles in, maximize some space, you know, things like that, this, there's not really a home anywhere else in the budget for this. So this will be a good first step in trying to revitalize some of these offices and their furniture. Land use map digitalization project, the initial $75,000 was a placeholder. So we got a quote from, I believe it's Atkins, one of the government contract vendors that will do scanning for us. For every bank box that we fill with paper, it is $750. So I think that'll give us 100 bank boxes. We ended up cutting that back to $10,000. Now that we have the two, the two full-time land use admins, we're thinking maybe we get a, you know, a couple boxes a month kind of thing, see what we're capable of getting scanned in, see what, see what that looks like and then come back hopefully next year. The reason why we're doing this, space rate in town hall is very limited. Right now we only have two conference rooms, this conference room right now and the other conference room that we have meetings in that doesn't have much audiovisual capabilities. There's also a room downstairs that is roughly the same size as that conference room that is just filled with maps. So it's really being underutilized. If we scan that in, that could be a possible another meeting room. Because some nights there's three meetings going on here and they have to meet in the Public Works Cafeteria, which is, I don't know if you've ever had that fun, Mrs. Getch knows all too well. Yeah, in the kitchen, it's, it's, yeah, it's, we need to have more space for our meetings. So, and then the final one in general government, conference room AV upgrade. I spearheaded this one as well, just because the, the other conference room, we had a Board of Selectmen meeting in there not that long ago. And we had a, a little camera sitting up here and I was just moving it as people were talking that was not conducive to a, a meeting of the Board of Selectmen of the town. So I think that's, you know, we, we cut it back to $15,000. But having a couple cameras, some microphones, I think would go a long way in that room. To make in that room more functional, transparent, videos can, you know, all the other meetings that happen in there can be put on YouTube. So, does anyone have any questions for general government?
If I could just add.
You want to talk into a mic, Dan, they can't hear you. You wanna talk to your mic, Dan? They can't hear you.
Good evening. So just to add to that, you know, these initiatives, we're really trying to stretch the utility of this building. And by taking a room that's full of maps, that's been sitting there for, you know, tens, you know, probably, who knows how long. If we can start the process of getting it out of the room, make that into another office, improve the other conference rooms so we can really utilize it, then that stretches the utility of this building. And of course, that saves us a lot of money down the road if we can get more years out of, out of our facility here. So that's the thinking.
All right. So we talked about emergency management. The public safety radio tower is still in the budget for three hundred thousand dollars. The emergency management vehicle has been taken out of the budget. I heard through the grapevine, I think they're looking at exploring a grant for a similar type vehicle to that. Down in police, two police vehicles outfitted, outfitted, I guess it's called in this particular instance, with lights and, you know, all the, all the little bells and whistles. The marine vehicle, the vessel, this is for, every couple of years, this vehicle goes in for service. And whether it needs a new motor or some major overhaul done, I believe a couple of years ago, there was a major overhaul done, and the town did not put any money aside. And there, I think it had to be an additional appropriation or from contingency. So the, the police department wanted to be proactive in knowing that this boat is going to need some work done to it in the next year or so. And they believe, you know, this is a, you know, we need this money for the repairs that are gonna be coming up for this boat. If anyone has any questions, I would just, I don't really know too much about this, so I would just hold them on for the chief. Radio tower base communications, we spoke about. Ties back to the public radio tower as well as the other IT-related radio tower expense there. Firearms replacement program, I believe we are switching the current brand of handgun to a, to a, to a different model. So you can ask him more about that if you'd like. Administrative vehicle speaks for itself. And then tactical team equipment, I believe if anyone here follows the Eastline Police Department on Facebook, they just joined a partnership, I'm not sure with who, but I saw it come across the Facebook page. They joined a partnership with somebody, a regional tactical team. And so as part of, being a member of a regional tactical team, you have to keep up on equipment and training. Anyone have any questions so far? All right. Eastline fire service. Next year, I envision all these four departments will probably be consolidated into one, pending, you know, all approvals and everything going smoothly. So just type, going into the Eastline Fire Service Apparatus Reserve. I've had the, I've been fortunate enough to work very closely with our acting chief and deputy chief, Eric Quinn and Bill Bundy. And I've had a tour of two of the fire stations so far. And I always, always curious to say, okay, how old's that fire truck? And when's the, you know, replacement of that? Something that startled me the other day was hearing that a expected, the expectation to get a fire truck now is forty-eight months. So between thirty-six and forty-eight months, we order a fire truck, we will not see it in service for approximately three to four years. So, and I can't remember who said it the other day, a tower truck costs over two million dollars. Our fire, one of them is within the next five years probably, I think it was in two thousand and six. And then I think the other one isn't that new as well. So we're putting about a hundred thousand dollars, Board of Selectmen cut it back to seven five. It's a talking point. This is a, early discussions of this. I think if we want to really get into how many vehicle, you know, pieces of apparatus we have and the replacement costs, I think would really startle. Because I think there's a probably ten, twelve pieces of apparatus. And if they're on a twenty-year replacement cycle, that's every other year, we're buying a new piece of apparatus. So just something to keep in mind for everybody. We're gonna present more detailed of when we're gonna turn over and expect to replace these items with a more robust capital improvement committee when that comes online. So the theme here with the fire service, the Eastline Fire Service, Flanders, Nianic, and the Fire Marshal is we are going to have town management overseeing the distribution of these capital items and management of the capital items, right? So when we look at Flanders and Nianic, each of them have four sets of turnout gear for twenty-four thousand dollars. That has been removed from their budgets and has been added. We added ten thousand dollars to the Eastline Fire Service turnout gear PP&amp;E. So the chief and the deputy chief can allocate the gear based on needs for across town as opposed to individual fire companies. So it'll, I think the gear will go to best, you know, better return on our investment there for that. Same thing with the SCBA, forty-five minute cylinders. That was previously in the Flanders and the Nianic budgets. We've removed that out of them. We put that in the Eastline Fire Service. So now we have uniformity across the fire stations across town. We talked about the turnout gear, the PP&amp;E. Assorted hoses, slash appliance replacement. We cut that back to six thousand dollars after discovering that there was approximately thirteen thousand dollars left from this year's capital plan. We've spent eight thousand of that, but there's still five thousand dollars left. So the chief and the deputy chief are comfortable that six thousand dollars is more than enough for, for any replacement hoses that are needed. And then in the future, if we need more hoses, they can ask for it in the following year. But every year, all hoses are, I believe all the hoses have to be tested. And then if they fail test, they non-service, and we gotta replace them. Okay, so where are we? Two-way radio replacement, same thing. All the firemen have, you know, walkie-talkies or radios, and those batteries need to be replaced on a schedule. The other one, the Eastline Fire Service. Currently, we have ten full-time firemen, and I'll call it an accompaniment of part-time firemen. But right now, the schedule is done on paper, and they are posted at the firehouses, okay? So if something happens, that schedule gets ripped down, it gets shredded. We have to wait for the other, for someone else to print the schedule and put it back up. There's nowhere online, there's nowhere for these schedules to go. So the idea is for, and we just actually demoed a software today, and we signed an agreement to get this started. I think it costs six hundred dollars this year. We're gonna absorb it in our budget. And in the following year, we'll, I don't know the exact breakdown, but this, this covers it. But this'll give us a scheduling software for the career in the part-time firemen. So when someone's out, there's call-ins, there's a, there's a set schedule. It's just really putting structure around these, the fire service is really what it comes down to. So.
That would allow for better allocation of, you know, not going to overtime?
Overtime, bidding, getting into the seniority, getting into all those union issues. And just making sure we have an adequate number of firemen at any given time. So I think this alleviates all of those, I believe. So we could talk about the other software as well. So that's the scheduling software and the Eastline Fire Service. Also, if you go down to the Fire Marshal line, on that same page, there's another software for inspections. Every commercial property in town has to be inspected either yearly or every three years, Dan? I don't know exactly. I know it has to go through inspections. Same thing with residential properties with so many dwellings. So this soft, we currently don't have a software. Right now, we do billing through QuickBooks. So we will, we'll roll out this inspection software. It's for fire marshals and inspections. It sets up invites or timelines. Okay, July one twenty-one, you got your inspection. I'll see you July one twenty-four, right? Or whatever the statutory either have to do it. So it puts some parameters and structure in place for that.
Are these software packages subscription, or do you own them?
For the scheduling software that is subscription-based, we pay ninety-six dollars a fireman per year. And for the inspection software, I'm not sure. So one of them, I just read the contract today, so that's why I was, I knew it was ninety-six dollars a person.
So we'll see this each year then, at least for the scheduling?
I envision, usually what happens is we put, when we implement a software, we put it in the capital projects for the first year, expend the money. Usually, it's one to three years kind of thing, and then it moves into the operating budget. Just because usually implementation of software has a larger dollar amount associated with it. Like when we, when we, when you guys, six, seven years ago, and we took a capital project out from Munis, that accounting software, I believe it was six hundred and seventy thousand dollars, right? We just spent the last of that the other week. So now we're into the town budget, operating budget for that money. So those will probably convert over. Once they, once they start becoming an annual subscription, we'll move them into the operating budget.
So Kevin, for the two software packages, I noticed they're the same amount. Is that a guesstimate, or did they just happen chance come out to be the same?
Placeholders.
Placeholders, that's what I thought.
Yep.
And would they include service contracts within that contract?
Service contracts like maintenance issues kind of thing?
Or is it something that our IT department would then have as an enhanced duty or expanded duty?
Rich, I, can you save that question for the IT department?
Sure.
Because I'm not, off the top of my head, I don't, you know, I don't get into, are they cloud-based, or are they on a network somewhere? I'm like, oh, that software looks good, and it's gonna, you know, put a schedule out there for me? Perfect, sign up. So I'm not quite sure, I'm not quite sure the backend of that.
Oh, okay.
So we can ask the Fire Marshal, or the Fire, the acting Fire Chiefs.
Yeah, I'm just curious about potential hidden fees going forward.
So my question is always, break out the implementation fees, right? I wanna see every penny. So for instance, for that scheduling software, the budget is two hundred and fifty dollars an hour for implementation. They gave us, was it five hours of implementation, like twelve fifty? So my first question was, okay, so you're gonna do this in five hours, not fifty hours, because you're gonna blow this budget sky high. So I always look at, you know, implementation costs versus annual recurring costs when we kind of build that out.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't believe, I have had conversations with the Fire Marshal regarding the inspection software, although I know he's looked at them. But I know firsthand, just the scheduling software touches my office a little bit, being in payroll. And also, I kind of, you know, oversee the scheduling, things like that, you know, just make sure everything's flowing smoothly. So that's why I have more knowledge of that one. The scheduling software was not my circus and not my monkey. So I defer to the expert on that particular one.
Thank you.
Okay. So I think we went through the Eastline Fire Service. Flanders, there's two things left in the Flanders budget specific for the Flanders Fire Department, so we left them there. The first one is a portable water tank. So this was really a request that was spurred after the fire a couple of months ago that happened. So this wouldn't have prevented anything, but this is another option in our toolkit, right? So this is a portable water tank, about three thousand gallons. It can get set up in a few minutes. And then as the tankers roll in, they dump the water into this holding pond essentially. It's really like a swimming pool, or like a, you know, a quick, you know, install swimming pool. Water gets dumped in there, and then they can pump the water from there to the, to the scene, right? So it's a little staging point for the tankers to roll up, dump the water, move on, or come back and keep refilling this pond. So twenty-five hundred dollars, it sits on a rack until you need it. You can throw it in the back of a, you know, the pickup truck and have it set up in five, ten minutes. So for twenty-five hundred dollars, we, we thought that was kind of a no-brainer. Announcement system for calls in the station. So this is intercom system within the firehouse. So wherever you are on that property, you know there's a call coming in. Right now, I don't know if they're dead zones or what you wanna call them, but some areas of the firehouse, it's hard to hear the tone when it comes through. So this is really a health and safety issue. You know, making sure that the firemen, if they're out in the bay, working on the fire truck or cleaning it or something, they hear the call come in. So Nianic, the main station here, just had theirs put in last year. And theirs was put in, I think they did it within their training and OSHA budgets. So they paid for it through capital from some dollars they had left. But it should really be a capital item. So, and then rapid intervention team pack that was taken out of the budget. In conversations with the Nianic Volunteer Fire Chief, who's also the deputy, acting deputy chief, Eric Quinn, they have one of those in Nianic. So he said, okay, well, we've got one in town, we've got that one there. The, and then the other one, oh, the other one that's still in that budget, the female bunk room in Flanders. There's currently one bunk room. That fifty thousand was a placeholder. I wasn't quite sure how much it cost. And now having conversations with Joe Brugaw and Ron Benz, the maintenance supervisor, I think his original quote was ninety-five hundred dollars, ten thousand, just sounded better. Really, give him a five-dollar contingency in case he had to buy a couple more nuts and bolts or whatever. And then down to Fire Marshal, we talked about the inspection software. The only other thing we're gonna talk about is the Fire Marshal vehicle, the deputy Fire Marshal vehicle. The current vehicle is a two thousand and six Ford Expedition. You've probably seen it driving around town. It is big and red. That is gonna look really good when the park and rec seasonal staff run that this summer. But, so that's why when we get down a little further, you'll notice Park and Rec doesn't have a vehicle in their budget. The idea is to repurpose that, remove the decals. But we'll turn that over to Park and Rec and let them use that for their summer beach staff, driving to the beach, to Bride Brook and around town. So it is not a, we understand this vehicle is old. It doesn't have much useful life left, but we're not driving across country, we're driving a mile down the road. So with conversation with the first selectmen and the Park and Rec, Park and Rec Director, you know, if the vehicle's working, if the vehicles, if the mechanic's signing off that the vehicle's roadworthy, we'll, we'll send it down the road. And the idea is, if someone has to break down this vehicle, better be an instructor with a backseat of soccer balls than the fire chief on his way to a call. So, yeah, so that's, that's what we had there. Going down, we already talked about Public Works. Scroll right down, pass that to Culture and Recreation, the vehicle we were just talking about. This first one, vehicle for beach staff. We took that out. We're gonna give a two thousand and six Ford Expedition. So the other, other things that were left in the budget, the pickup truck. We're gonna replace the two thousand and ten pickup truck here with a plow. And I believe it has a body on it as well, for ninety-two thousand dollars. The trailers, they currently do not have an enclosed trailer. They currently have a, what do you call it, just open-air trailer, you know, the bottom part. And the problem is, every night, the maintainers, sorry, the maintainers have to drop off all the equipment off the trailer so it doesn't get stolen or whatever, put it into the maintenance shed. And then every morning, load the shed, load the trailer back up, and then go back to the day. If we, instead of replacing the current trailer with the same trailer, if we replace that with an enclosed trailer, slap a lock on it, slap a lock on the back part of it, you know, the hitch. And then in the morning, take the lock off, throw it on the back of the truck, and take back off. So he's hoping to have some sort, some efficiencies with this, as well as keeping the equipment secured in a locked trailer. The Toro Workman, I don't, this is a fancy word for a UTV that they use either down at the beach, on trails, throughout town. This is a replacement. We're replacing our ten-year-old Toro Workman that we currently have in operation. And then the Polaris ATV. This ATV is used by the lifeguards on the beach itself. And the frame of this, there's actually a photo I have, and we, I'm sure Jerry's got the photo in his presentation when he presents this. The whole bottom of this ATV is, it's by saltwater all day. And so it doesn't have a frame anymore, essentially. So this thing is, it's not on its last leg, it's being dragged. So they're looking for that. When it comes, so now we're down to park maintenance. After having conversations with the engineering department and the deputy public works director, Bill Shear, the initial estimate of three hundred thousand dollars has been revised to four hundred thousand dollars. Dealing with wrapping it around the corner, so it's not so much as a straight wall, seawall. It'll kind of go around the edge. And it's a little more robust wall, and it'll have further, it'll be further strengthened by sheet pilings, right? Is it sheet piling, metal sheet pilings, Dan? Dan might know a little more about this than the encounter.
So, you know, right now, the temporary wall is straight across. And the problem with that is the water comes up and rides up behind it. And that's what eventually will take the wall out. The water goes on either side and gets behind. The wall that they're going to build, the permanent wall, will be like the letter C, sort of. There are sides that come around, and it'll protect that water from getting in and behind the wall and damaging it. It'll also be a much stronger, it'll be the interlocking metal panels that they drive down fifteen feet or so. So, you know, the, the water won't have any opportunity to really wash it out. So it's a much more robust. So, it's a much more robust and strong system, it's like what they use in a graving dock when they're going to, you know, pick the water out and work on a submarine, you see the big panels, it's that same system, the interlock. And so, it should do the job, but it's a little more money to make it wrap around. But certainly, we're going to do it, we have to do it right.
And then there's an erosion control plan at McCooks and Hole-in-the-Wall as well as a park improvement program. The park improvement program is a, I guess I would call it a catch-all for things that fall outside of, you know, if we want to replace goalposts, benches, things like the little things that cost a couple thousand dollars, but really the operating budget can't really absorb. I think the big one was like soccer posts, things like that that are, you know, $10,000 asks. We can get a couple of those in a year and just replace some of the pieces of assets throughout the parks. And we cut that back to $25,000 from 50. Darrows Park, Darrows Pond, Darrows Pond Park. There was initial request to have, I think it was $450,000 all in one. And we asked that to be broken out into a series of smaller projects. So, originally, it was one Darrows Park enhancement for $450,000. And when asked, we broke that four ways. Disc golf course, trail signs and supplies, a water sampling era area, and then aquatics educational center. After discussions with, and then also trail construction for $360,000. After discussions with Park and Rec, the director, we left disc golf and the trail signs in. Trail construction, we were exploring opportunities to pay for that with a grant. And I believe they did make some progress on that, I haven't heard quite back yet. So, when Mr. Locken speaks next week, we will, we could ask him about that. Pretz Park Renovations, this is another project we broke down, I believe it was a $2 million ask. And we asked for it to be further broken down into a number of projects. So, the projects that are still with us, I'm sorry, the projects that we kept originally were the restroom improvements, which is a septic system, field renovations, which is really to, how do you say it, grade the current fields. So, there's, because right now there's divots with the frost and like that, so this is really, we kind of need to level the field with a, you know, plane. There was a garage expansion renovation that we took out. And then four sets of lights, pickleball lights, soccer field retrofit lights, youth soccer lights, and then softball lights. Originally, the first Selectmen, we left in the restroom improvements, field renovations, and the pickleball lights. After discussions with the Board of Selectmen, we are going to use ARPA money. There's leftover ARPA money for Park and Rec. Park and Rec had money for Hole-in-the-Wall bathroom and there was something else. But they don't need the money for those projects, we're going to close those projects out. And then we're going to go before the Board of Selectmen and then ultimately the Board of Finance to ask for the ARPA money to be re-appropriated in restroom improvements and field renovations. So, it's still money that was originally designated for Parks and Rec. So, we're going to close up the projects where he doesn't, they don't need that money and then use it for new projects to directly offset, you know, this capital project, so that was a great use. But not the pickleball lights. Dan made a promise to buy bioluminescent pickleballs. So, that'll solve everyone's issue there. Okay, and then what else do we have? And then, high school projects, Board of Ed projects.
Should we reach out to the Board of Ed?
Yeah, I don't really, I don't, yeah, yeah. Yep, perfect. So, yeah, so total, our initial projects were over $19 million and we are down to 13.3 million. So, we've cut about $5.7 million capital projects, there's still a little work left. The one thing I will say, the Board of Ed projects, this $4.3 million, the $1.2 million, and I believe even this aquatics one, all qualify for 40.7% state reimbursement. So, of the Board of Ed, I think that was like six million, I have the numbers written down somewhere. It was $2.6 million of reimbursements. So, it's not like we're bonding, you know, $10.6 million, it's about $8 million. But keep in mind, we are borrowing, we have bond anticipation notes of $6 million that are due in August and then $2 million for the land. So, if we, if we're, if this, if this capital project quest is $8 million, we're going to bond 16 million this year. Right, just so everyone's aware.
So, for the turf track and, the turf field and the track, I-
Oh, I'm sorry, my screen, I used the wrong screen.
I know we weren't going to talk about the Board of Ed, but since the last page has said it's the last item. Wasn't that a fund that was supposed to be kind of deposited into each year and that is way behind where it's supposed to be?
Yeah, I'm not, you're talking about the artificial turf replacement? I'm not quite sure, Rich. I know in the Board of Selectmen, there was a question about that, but I'm not too familiar with it. I know when Mr. Newton was here at the last Board of Selectmen meeting, there was mention that that turf field could be put off for a year or two, I believe was the phrase, so.
Yeah, so to address that, yeah, we thought that maybe we can get other, a couple of years out of the existing turf. There was a discussion, you know, when it was initially installed, the theory was that, you know, we really got to have it and we will fundraise and we'll put money aside and then, you know, 10 years down the road, when it has to be replaced, there'll be a sort of like a sinking fund to take care of it. And it got lost in the shuffle as things do, memories get, you know, people move on and the initiative to, should I say, money was lost, so. How, you know, future things that we take on or we have promises, I guess there should be some way to keep that promise front and center, top of mind for the people that, you know, convince us that it can be done. And I guess that's just human nature at some level, but that was the story, didn't happen, so. Has to be replaced at some point.
If we do bond the eight million, how much will that increase our debt-to-service amounts? Do you have a rough idea?
I don't, I can get you one, but it's not eight million, it's 16 million.
But eight of that is money that's already bonded?
Not bonded, so of the eight million, we, so before we touch this capital projects list, right? We have $6 million of bond anticipation notes that have kind of been rolling and accumulating over the years that we haven't bonded. We just kind of took out this one-year note and we're paying the interest on it. And then, just what, two months ago, we closed on the land purchase. The deal with the land purchase was, the town will float itself $2 million until we go to bond and replenish ourselves in August.
All right, so then it is 16 million?
It is 16 million, yeah. I mean, just this year, we took out $6 million of bond anticipation notes and we paid, I think, $296,000 in interest on that money without paying principal. So, we just paid that roughly $300,000, a tenth of a mil, just to roll the debt forward a year. So, we need to stop that as well. So, but we're working towards that, there's light at the end of our tunnel.
So, since there is a big ask for the Board of Ed capital, I know that Jeff Newton had offered up a, you know, a tour of any of the facilities. So, I reached out to him again today just to see whether any, he hadn't had any takers. I would certainly be interested in taking a look at the facility, so I can get back to him and tell him.
Yeah, I'd like to do that.
Yeah, so then, you know, maybe I'll just get an email stream to see if we can come up with a good date.
Would we need to make that a meeting or no?
You know what, I think if it's just purely an informational, we're not discussing the budget, if we're just seeing-
I think we visited that certain, a couple of months ago with some of the board. And I think as long as you're not discussing any business, just the fact that you're in the same place at the same time, I don't think needs to be noticed.
Right, and we're not coming to any decisions on anything, we're just, oh, this is what the artificial turf looks like, you know?
Yeah.
I don't think that, yeah.
I agree.
Okay, so I'll switch face with Jeff and get some emails. All right, so, public discussion, anyone? No?
I've got a lot of greats.
Any comments from the board?
I want to know where Dan's going to buy those luminescent pickleballs.
If I could make public discussion, but it's not about my issue, it's about Dan and Kevin.
Sure.
Well, come on, come on to the mic so they can hear you. If you're going to say anything, I want to record it.
No, it's not about my issue, but it's about Dan and Kevin. I've sat for the last three nights, or more, as they worked through the budget. And they cut, and they cut, and they cut delicately and they cut properly and they cut. But it was a masterful job to watch them work at it. And it was just really fascinating and they were all so civil. But, you know, they asked interesting questions and they got people there. And so, it's just, and you probably know, there's just a lot more work done before you got what you got, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And needless to say, thank you both for, you know, the work you did to make our job easier. Any other comments from the board? If not, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Certainly.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everyone.